You're on.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll call the work. Do a few agenda items. The first thing is public comments. Anyone have any public comments? No? Okay. Uh, the second item is approval of the October minutes. And we have a motion to approve them.
So.
Second. If you'd like a favor.
Aye.
Uh, third item is a local preservation news. This is something that we have talked about, um, here several times over the last two years, and it's never really gotten any traction. Um, from my understanding that there is now some traction and interest at the council level. Um, and just because of the history that we have had with it. You know, I want to make sure that the ordinance, if we choose to recommend anything, um, is something that is going to support, uh, the city and support, uh, sort of the mission of the ordinance. And I want, really wanted us to go over anything that we find, um, needs further discussion. Ellen was nice enough to get the newest draft of the ordinance, um, this morning and got us a copy of that. And she printed it out so we can all have it. And this is stuff that has been worked on through Corporation Council. And we got a copy of it. She also, you know, I like flow charts and stuff, so she was nice enough to help make a flow chart. So we can sort of see, looking at it from...
First run at a flow chart.
First draft of a flow chart. Cause there's a lot involved here. There's this ordinance, it's, you know, it's fifty pages. Um, there's a lot of detail in here. And I want to make sure that we understand it, number one, and number two, it's something that the community can understand. I just want to open her up to this group. If there's anything in the ordinance right now where we should focus our attention on, where we can make suggestions or improvements.
Well, I was just wondering, Judge Fletch, you can shed some light. Is this going through a committee at council or is it...
Not yet. So, once, once, uh, something's more solid on, on our level, then the council will make a determination as to if they want a subcommittee within the city council.
So the council is...
I don't even know if they want to have a commissioner sitting on a new...
I guess I'm just trying to figure out how, did it actually get kicked back to the planning commission or...
It did not.
Okay.
It was just had, it was brought to us before, um, over the years. And for us that have been on here, you know, I just want to make sure that we, you know, understand that it's coming forth again because there's so much history. And we saw on the minutes, we talked about it.
Yeah, from twenty twenty-one. And so it's been going on for a while. So perhaps for the newer members of the commission. I don't know, somebody, maybe Ellen, can you kind of give us a brief synopsis of, uh, of, you know, how this got, you know, how this started in twenty twenty-one and then brought it and then kind of bring us up to speed as, as far as where we stand right now in the, in the latest iteration?
Sure. Well, the possibility of the LPO, um, was initiated by myself, um, as I became more educated about the distinctions between national designation, um, historic designation, and local historic designation. And in terms of what that either affords or challenges, um, a property with, um, and good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
And, um, uh, and the, my position that the city could definitely, the city's significant building stock and significant architectural structures, um, would benefit from the protections that come from a local designation. Um, but to have a local designation, you have to have a local ordinance. And so anything that you're able to do from the local level and, um, uh, create enabling legislation in accordance with that starts with the, starts with the ordinance. And that's, I guess that's the, the broad stroke of it.
Ellen, we left last time this was going to go to city council and you were going to update us on what happened.
Yes, as far as, uh, the update I got from Elliot is that it has not gone to council yet.
Okay, so get it done.
Yep.
Is the goal here today to get to them with our approval? That here it is from the planning commission?
Um, I'm going to defer to Mike a little bit on that. Um, but I, I guess I'm, I mean, I'm on the same page with Mike that, uh, i- if nothing else, because of the history that planning commission has had in kind of getting, getting our arms around it conceptually, if nothing else, I think there's, um, some, something to offer, excuse me, um, council in terms of trying to proceed from there. And Elliot and I have had some, a few brief conversations about, um, things that he has in mind and, um, how those can impact the, the, um, the legislation in terms of what it enables or takes away from that legislation. So still kind of banging that out.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that if there are, if there's anything in here that we want to discuss and recommendations that we want to make, that we do that, you know, in conjunction with Elliot while it's being prepared for council. Um, we've had a lot of discussions on this topic and, and a lot of different opinions and thoughts about how this will affect the city and individuals and properties, um, and what the best course of action is. And, you know, I just don't want to have a situation where it passes and all of a sudden, you know, this, you know, the planning commission has no knowledge of what is going on.
Well, you and I have been in, in, since twenty-one. If they passed it, I would be, yeah, and I would wonder, well, what version did they pass?
Right.
We talked about multiple versions.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I really support this, but I, the, I remember one where, under purpose, where it says to cultivate, promote, hear the awareness, knowledge, understanding, appreciation, civic pride, and beauty character of Jamestown. Can we make that for all people in the city? All homeowners in the city? Okay, just kidding. But everybody take pride in their home, everybody take care of their home, and treat it like it's a historic landmark? That's, that's a significant part of it.
I, I think our, our, our current building code has, has something to that effect, yes.
We could, we could do that.
And, uh, you know, I, I, I read through briefly of the draft and I'm fairly familiar with some of the historic districts. I was, I was on JRC when we established the district downtown and some of the neighborhood districts. And I guess I'm trying to, still trying to get an understanding of, you know, what benefit it may be and what detriment it may also be as far as, uh, commercial development. Uh, you know, you know, what are, what are the, what are the advantages, what are the disadvantages? Are we right, is time right for, for this to occur in Jamestown? I know that it has occurred in, you know, I think City of Buffalo has an LPO and some of the suburbs up in the Buffalo area deal. I'm, I'm a little concerned about the, the possibility of, of, uh, what this may have for impact on commercial development. You know, if, if it is enacted. And I'm a, I'm a more of the carrot and stick type of, uh, person, and this seems to be more of the stick. You know, granted, now, I would, I would love to see everything preserved and saved, but there is a economic cost to trying to rescue a building. As we all know, they can be, you know, the, the number of buildings that we do have, you know, particularly in the downtown area, that is, uh, dormant and vacant for a long time, would have, would having an LPO, say fifteen, twenty years ago, prevented that from happening? Or is it just the economy of the area that, that is causing the, the, you know, the buildings to remain vacant and, uh, and unattended? So I, I, I would like to delve further into it. Uh, I'm not saying that I'm against it or that I'm, that I'm for it at this point. I need to learn more about it, more about the, you know, in particular, the application for certification. You know, what is that going to entail? You know, if, if a, if a, if either a LPO district or individual building, you know, is, you know, is involved, you know, what is the exact process that you have to go through to do that? Uh, you know, does it impact, you know, the, the current historic districts that are, that are, you know, on record? You know, would they be included or potentially part of them? Thinking particularly on the Lakeview historic district, which, which does have a lot of, you know, personal residences on them, you know, right now. You know, you, you, the, the homeowner has the option to take advantage of historic tax credits. Uh, but if an LPO is there, you know, you know, do they have the, you know, is there any advantage, you know, above and beyond the preservation of the historic fabric of the, of the structure?
You'll also run into a situation where your bank may own it and then yours is dormy. And you can sit for years.
I'm interested in it too. I worked with Greg and then after Greg left, I was the one that got the grant to do the Forest Heights, um, district. And those Forest Heights, Lakeview, and downtown are the three current districts.
Correct. National, national.
Nationally recognized.
Districts, not local.
And at that time, um, one of the parts of the process was going through the Forest Heights neighborhood. And, um, there was a lot of pushback from homeowners, concerned that this was going to tie their hands or create obstacles for them. Um, and at that time, the, the language we used was sort of like, you can choose to take advantage of these benefits, but you're not required to.
Correct.
So in this, we're requiring them to, right? Um, and given that this is more of a legislative document, it's not necessarily what the public will see or learn about this from, but it doesn't really talk about the benefits to the public. Um, it more so is talking about how they will get in trouble if they don't follow.
Um, I guess I, I would challenge that a little bit. I don't, um, I don't see, um, anything punitive about this.
Well, I mean, it doesn't, um, describe how the city will help homeowners or property owners to get those historic tax credits.
That's, that's, that's a diff, that's a, it would be a different thing. Yeah. So on the local level, that has nothing to do with the city. I mean, excuse me, that, the tax credits have nothing to do with the city. That's the national, and that's already in place. So in terms of the city having a role, helping, um, homeowners who own a contributing structure to one of the existing national historic districts, we can certainly be a resource on some level. I am not a historic preservation specialist per se, but I know where to point people. Um, but that has nothing to do with anything on the local level.
So nothing with the LPO would support or connect people to take advantage of those national resources?
Not, not legislatively. I mean, we could certainly look into providing that as a service within the Department of Development. Um, but yeah, from a policy standpoint, that's, that's not...
You almost have to pass this first.
Yes.
To have that.
I see.
And then say, okay, now that we have this in place.
Yeah. So on, on...
Yeah.
On that note, in answer to one of your questions, Greg, in terms of, for example, the notion of, well, would we just kind of automatically, quote unquote, make our existing national historic districts our local historic districts? And that's actually something that the Preservation Board or the Preservation Commission would be mandated with, not anybody else. But again, you can't have your board or your commission without your LPO. So the LPO is just the enabling legislation to make anything else related to that on the local level, um, possible from a policy standpoint.
Okay. Depending on who you pick, let's say you pass this, then you, then the board, could the, could it change with the members of the board? Cause they changed, they come to go.
Could the LPO change?
Yeah.
Amendment wise, yeah.
Oh, sure. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, just like, just like any ordinance, any policy document, yeah, you can certainly. I mean, I don't know what the, the formal process is in terms of submitting amendments and how you vote on that. But sure, yeah, that's, that's how laws work.
And without having your crystal ball with you, Ellen, right now. Uh, you know, you know, if, if this is, if the ordinance is adopted, what will you foresee as, um, you know, the initial foray into, you know, the, the local preservation outline? Or, or anybody, I mean, I'm, what I'm trying to get at, get at grasped is, yeah, we can't have, can't have a commission without having the ordinance. But it would be, it would be, I think, good public policy to at least, you know, allow the public to know that, okay, you know, we're going to protect this LPO. And the commission, you know, may take a look at, you know, certain individual structures or certain neighborhoods that, 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 you know, may have already, you know, contributed to the, either state or national historic register. So that, so the general public has kind of an idea that, well, gee, now I live out on, on Parkley, you know, is this going to impact me? Are they, are they going to put my, you know, my roadway in a, in a historic, uh, you know, area where I'm going to have to be concerned about, you know, whether, you know, what color I paint my truck? Or what I, or what I can, can I do with it with the extra improvements?
Right.
So I, I guess that's what I'm, I'm trying to, trying to figure out, you know, you know, if there, you know, if there is any forethought to, to which areas of the city this might impact.
That's up to the community. So once, so in terms of kind of a general sequence of things, the first part of that sequence is the adoption of the LPO. The second part of that, and I'm, these are broader strokes than what the granularity of it is. But then you, um, uh, form and establish your board or your commission. That board or commission really has nothing to do unless or until the community comes forward and starts to, starts to submit nominations for either standalone structures or, um, or proposed districts. Because there, there are nothing. We, we have, we have national districts and we do have national standalone landmarks, but there's still, in the scheme of things, those have to be re, re-nominated on a local level. So for example, the Armory is a national landmark. But if we, if you pass the LPO, that doesn't mean it automatically has local historic designation. It has to still go through a nomination process unless there's a provision that the, that the commission or the board that's formed says, hey, everything that we've got on the national level, let's just also designate it on the local level. Otherwise...
I would add, for sure.
Right, right. So, but if that were not to happen, the Preservation Board or Commission has nothing to do unless or until there are nominations from the community to say, hey, I want to nominate Lucille Ball's, um, childhood home on Stewart as, you know, as a, as a local landmark. And so then it would go the process, go through the process. Um, the flow chart I provided you with, um, since it's really hypothetical, I did adopt that from East Aurora's. Um, and so, and again, Jamestown's process and flow chart does not need to resemble that in any way, but just to kind of give you a, for example, visually of what that might look like, I just did some copy and paste and replace with East Aurora and Jamestown with that. Um, but again, just to, sorry to beat it down, um, uh, should an LPO be approved, when there's a board or commission established, they have nothing to do unless or until there are nominations put forth by the community to say, hey, I want, I want Forest Heights to be, I want the, I want the existing boundaries of the Forest Heights National District to also have local designation. And then it has to go through its process.
But the commission does have the authority to designate, like designate landmarks and historic districts. So they can go out on their own and...
A- a- as we've got in the draft right now. Yeah.
And designate whatever they see.
Yeah. But again, that board or commission would have to also, um, establish its own processes as to what that looks like.
Yeah.
Like how do they, do they just throw a pin on a map and be like, let's go, let's go designate that? Who knows?
And how about, how does, how does this tie in with individual property rights? And let's say if the, if the commission does say, well, we want, we want to nominate one oh one North Main Street to be out, to be an individually, uh, local, uh...
Well, here it says, here it says anyone can nominate.
So anyone can nominate.
So anyone can nominate. So let's say one oh one North Main is nominated and, um, is designated a local landmark. That means it has all the protections and requirements of the LPO unless or until the property owner were to request a variance for something they wanted to do.
So without property owner consent, this can be done?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I, not typically. And again, I can't speak verbatim as to what's in the draft right now. But typically you do need, um, even for national designation, you need, um, consent from the property owner. Yeah.
Of course, state or nationally, that this...
Yes, absolutely.
That would be my concern would be, would be new.
I did not see the consent clause in here.
I didn't, no, that's what, that's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, I don't know if there's one in there. There, there's certainly that on the national level is that you need, you need consent from the property owner.
On the local one, though. That's what, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I mean...
With the, the local ordinance, is there, is there individual property owner consent required to be in, for a property...
I don't, I don't, I don't know what's in there, Greg, I'm sorry. I don't know that...
Is that something you want to recommend?
That would be, that would be one of my concerns would be protecting individual property rights.
Yes. And with the limitation?
But what if you nominated a district and ten houses in the district were like cats and then you allowed it to reflect, no?
So the Preservation Board or Commission would have to have criteria in place as to what constitutes, you know, an approval. Like, oh, well, majority rules, I, I, you know, whatever they, they determine to be their, their voting processes really on how they, how they determine that.
And if they did this and wanted to change their house, they couldn't?
Sure they could.
They'd have to apply for a variance.
They could?
It, well, it depends on what they want to do. That's all. But that's, that's the case now. It's just, it just becomes part of the building code. And so if there's something about the building code that is in conflict with what the property owner either needs or wants, we have a process for that. And so someone with a, a local historic house would do the same thing. So there's, there's already a, a pathway and a process for people to...
I couldn't help but wonder about it until you gave me the info.
You wouldn't be able to put a tin roof on something that has a metal roof that's historic?
Yeah. Probably with that, probably not without a variance, but that's what the variance process is for.
And using light materials. If you're going to replace a, a, say a porch that was, you know, had, you know, maybe, you know, maple tummy roof, you know, boarding, you probably would not be able to, be allowed to just put up a, you know, a porch that has, you know, pressure treated lumber.
But again, to, to, to that end, once an LPO is in place, when the design standards are established, you can make them whatever you want.
Yeah.
So you can make tin roofs, okay, as part of your design standards.
I'm not saying that I'm, I, I'm for this in, you know, in a lot of pieces. I don't like driving around the city and seeing, you know, what porches that, that have been, you know, put on nineteen thirties, nineteen forties houses that are, that are just pressure treated lumber. It would be nice to, to be able to, to be able to have, you know, light kind of materials utilized. However, there is also, my concern is the cost factor.
Of course.
You know, individual property owners, you know, are opting for the lower cost methodology instead of using, you know, light kind of materials.
Right. And that's a, and that's a central part of the variance request process for anyone that comes in to apply for a variance. Um, much of that process is the property owner, um, explaining the economic impact of how the current code prevents them from compliance. And so the same would be true for anything within the LPO.
And a consent clause in there would hopefully ensure that people who are part of it wanted to be part of it in the first place. So they are in support of keeping light materials. But if there's not, and you're forcing somebody to do it, or you're, they have to come and get a variance, are they really going to take the appropriate steps to get the variance? Or are they just going to put down the treated lumber and be done?
The, the, the intended spirit of any local preservation ordinance is not really the weeds of colors and materials and that sort of thing. The true spirit of an LPO is really about providing a, a, a policy document that provides a layer of protection for significant structures. And that doesn't mean that that layer of protection means that X, Y, Z is going to happen because of that layer of protection. That layer of protection is really just a layer of review and reflection in terms of what someone may be proposing to do with that structure.
What about additional structures, like, uh, if they wanted to add a garage or a shed or something, wasn't there the original property? I didn't notice that.
They'd probably have to go for a variance.
Well, you would anyway.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah.
Things might be harder than that though. Yeah. Find the materials.
Yeah, the Preservation Board may, the Preservation Board, again, just as a, for example scenario, they may say, yeah, go ahead, build a garage on your property, but it needs to be in the same architectural style as your, as your home, kind of thing. So if you've got some Victorian home, please don't, we're not going to let you build a fully glass garage on your property.
Something like a stamp kind of great patio, add it to a, an old Victorian home. It might look nice, but it's not original to that, but, but that's what...
But, but if it can be designed in a period appropriate way, those are things that Preservation Boards are, are tasked with doing.
Is there ever a scenario where this would be just for commercial properties and not for private properties?
No, I've explored that.
I, I would not foresee that many structures or districts, you know, inside the city, you know, being nominated, you know, for, you know, local preservation. Uh, you know, unless, you know, it was, you know, you know, if we had Lucille Ball's, you know, private residence located within inside the city, I could see that being as nominated. I could see, you know, maybe the, the current Jackson Center as being, you know, nominated. I wouldn't see, you know, you know, Joe, your house would not be nominated. My, my house probably would not be nominated. I actually, you know...
Very historic.
There's a lot of history that went into that house.
Well, the na, the national standard that is typically, you know, adopted and appropriate at the local level, um, is currently fifty years. And so if a structure is fifty years or older, it is eligible for historic status.
Yeah. Majority of the house.
Yeah.
So can an individual, and I couldn't find it.
Sure.
Nominate their own dwelling?
Yes.
Sure. Yeah.
Is that in there?
Yes.
Okay.
But there, but there really is no incentive.
That's why...
And that's what, that's what I'm finding, that's what I'm getting at, is that there isn't an incentive for you to do it because, you know, unless it, unless it has a state or a national historic value, it's not going to qualify for any tax incentives. That's why I think that, you know, the, there's going to be fairly few districts or individual properties that are going to, you know, desire to have an LPO.
And the perception of that would be, well, if I, if I nominate my own property, then I fall underneath this umbrella, which would restrict what I do.
But that may be what that property owner wants. They may say, I never want this property to be demolished. And I'm going to, I'm going to nominate my house to make sure that it can never be demolished. It can, and, and it doesn't mean that a future property owner...
So what...
Yeah, so they can make those, you know, that can be part of their nomination process.
Well, well, as an example, there's a home in my neighborhood, our old neighborhood, Tom, um, on the corner of Palmer and Highland. We talked about it last night, I think, Jen, in the meeting. Um, beautiful little house, and it's scheduled to be done, but now it's hung up because they're considering it to be a historical type structure. The roof is going to be ungapped and costly, probably seventy thousand. They got it. And you know what's that? Every, every neighbor in the area is like, this house has got to come down. It's, it's a safety issue. So you're going to run into situations like that and bottlenecks because, you know, this house has been dormy for four years and it's bad. You know what else I'm talking about, right? Um, so, you know, if someone were to come in and buy that structure through the land bank or whoever owns it, and I don't know if it's the land bank or a bank right now, but, um, you know, then they can nominate it and then they can try to dunk that kind of money in. But, you know, where's their incentive? That's, that's the big kicker.
That's why I'm hoping for the state...
There needs to be an incentive and to incentivize the local ordinance for the people that want to improve and make their properties maintain that historic status.
And I guess I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, staffing capability, you know, to, to enforce. Because right now, you know, and I'm, I'm not, yeah, I, I know you can't answer for, you know, for administration, Ellen, but there appears to be, you know, a, you know, a huge backlog in, in current code enforcement cases. And this is, this, you know, even with all the best intent, there's going to be, you know, enforcement involved in this. And we're currently, you know, falling behind, you know, at least as far as I can tell, you know, with code enforcement and enforcing current code. And now we're gonna, now we're looking at expanding, you know, current code to include, you know, an LPO. So, you know, there ha- Again, I'm, I'm philosophically, I'm for this. I'm, I'm, you know, I, I'd love to have, you know, you know, all the history of each individual structure in the city, you know, maintained and maintained properly according to, you know, historical guidelines. But I just think that the, you know, where we're at currently with the economy of Jamestown, I just don't know if it's going to be a doable task.
And being able to force legislation is simple. And it's expensive to do that.
Yeah.
Is this something they can grant a hiree for?
Who's they?
The commission. In other words, apply for a grant to hire somebody.
Um.
Is that something that?
Yes, but, yes, but only if the city also applies to, applies to be a certified local government.
Right.
So the LPO, again, is legislation that enables the city to become a certified local government. Should the city get certified, then the city has access to state funds that are allocated every year for historic preservation in certified local government communities.
And that would be a more feasible route economically for the city.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I was sort of cautioned to is, is that we continue to apply for these things. And, you know, we either don't enforce them or they don't go, or they don't become enacted. The local waterfront protection, LWRP is one. That was, uh, that was worked on back when I was, you know, working for the city and back when Bill Rice was at your position, Ellen. That finally got adopted and, and under local law in two thousand eighteen. It wasn't until two, twenty twenty four that it actually even went, went into effect. It just kind of sat. And, but, and part of, part of the reason for the LWRP was it qualified the city for other grants to do work on the riverwalk, et cetera. Yet the, yet all of the regulations, et cetera, and code enforcement was never enacted.
So what if it never was passed? You said it was passed, and now it's, it was slow, but what if it never happened? Where more so than we are now?
Well, nothing's really come out yet.
Yeah.
There hasn't been any yet.
Whoever said anything was easy, huh?
And, and again, I'm not saying I'm not, I'm not for this.
Well, I, I guess I have, are there improvements in the riverfront that?
There are, but they weren't needed, there didn't need to be that thing in order to allow it.
Oh, okay.
The LWRP and the, and the Brownfield Opportunity Area kind of run hand in hand. And there were, there were codes that were written and passed and adopted back in two thousand eighteen that were never, never.
The riverwalk area and the fringes of, of, that wasn't connected to what you were saying. I know you, you said it took a long time.
That, that was connected to it, yeah. That, that assisted the, the city to apply for the funding for the, to, to that purchase.
Now, if the city became certified, as you said, would that allow there to be this potentially a staff person who could coordinate some of these different variances and all this process, but also maybe be a point person for the state and national tax credits?
Yeah.
To help homeowners within those districts get.
I mean, I mean, I already do that, you know, unofficially, so, yeah.
Because I don't know if, again, with things that take a long time, I don't know if we've really seen the engagement with the historic districts that we had hoped, or at least in the Forest Heights neighborhood. I'm not sure how many people have even started to use those benefits.
Oh, no, I, just from a, as, as a data point, upstate in general, whether it's Western New York, Central New York, North County, Hudson, whatever, upstate New York does not leverage historic tax credits at all. Like, close to ninety percent of the tax credits leveraged are downstate. And it's, and, and again, that's only because, it's not because they don't have access to them, they just don't leverage them.
But I think we've seen in our community that if it's not official and there isn't a point person and it's not super easy and someone you can chat with and talk to about it, people don't do it. So if this LPO led to all of these other things, you know, that would really, that would really be a great benefit. And takes some work off your desk to maybe get.
Oh, no, it's how they give me more, but that's okay. That's okay.
I know, like, we always talked about, you know, the, the state Historic Pres Office kind of recommended that you, um, have someone who could be a local point person for all this stuff. Who was more of a neutral party, you know?
Mm-hmm, sure.
So I would see that as the big benefit for the community. And then they can start to draw out personal incentives to, to help people see, hey, you know, you can get a tax break on this. If it led to more engagement with the state and national designations, it makes sense to me. If it's completely separate from that, I'm struggling to find the reason that this would really help our community.
So you indicated that the council might create a group to review this before they adopt it?
Well, I'm assuming that that's what they would do rather than just bring it to a resolution and, you know, here we are, here's the resolution, so they would need some information.
Well, that's what I'm doing, Matt, is, you know, could our recommendation here say, well, okay, let's, you know, extend our support to council and say, hey, if you're going to proceed with this, can you kick it back to the planning commission so that we can dive into it even further? If it's something that you're not going to proceed with and it's something that we want to make our own recommendation on, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
You know, but, but we're willing to do that.
Yep.
And I think we could, we could make it a stronger document and have some good ideas and conversations about it.
Yeah, we could, we could add to the sounding board for, for council, you know. Obviously, there's probably going to be public input out.
Right, you're going to have to hold a public meeting on it, of course, at some point, once it's instated, if it's instated. Flowing the information of the public is key, as you know, and everybody doesn't have the internet and smartphones and whatnot, so local media papers and all that.
I think there's a strong educational piece that needs to go along with it. Because if, if it is going to be successful, if it is going to be, you know, pass and be a success, there has to be an education piece for the, for the general public.
We can't even get them to put in meters that you can swipe a card with right now because the kickback is, wow. We can't, they don't understand that. And I get it, I know. But gotta move forward at some, some point in time.
Well, one of the things I think we're into a, a time, if you will, in our society, where a lot of things are difficult to get done. And I've got a couple of right now on my buildings. And, but the thing is, it takes a lot of selling, to not use another word. And we started out, from what I'm seeing and looking at it, with kind of like a beginning. Maybe we need to work on this thing and get it in the paper a few times and get some things out there with people, because we're talking about it, the people are going to react to it. And we're not giving the people out there, well, you might say, a good basket full of things that help them understand what's going on. That's the way I see it, very honestly, and then I'm basing this somewhat on experiences that I've had with different issues and stuff here with the county, with communities and everything else. The thing that the city, and I think city, not this, just city hall. City Hall and the rest of the city has not been communicating well with each other and spreading around and talking about a lot of these issues for probably the last fifty, sixty years. It started a slide right after Brooklyn Square. You could start seeing the disinterest kind of going out of the city. And it shows, it's all over the city. I don't know if you've seen any of the houses that are falling down. It's worked, it's happened. So I think what we're looking at in a lot of ways is how we communicate with the city, with the city residents, all of them, in getting things out there. Postjournalism is probably the best avenue, except for things that you might want to put out in a mailer.
Circulation's down big time.
No, but if you don't have the city behind you, the city residents moving behind you, it's going to be one of these other things that gets started close and doesn't go anywhere.
Or goes somewhere, no one knows about it, until they. And, and, you know, to be, to be honest, you know, looking at everything staffing wise, you know, the city's not in any position right now to take on any additional cost burden to staffing, additional staffing. So from my standpoint, the only way I see this possible is to kind of follow, as you said, under an umbrella, state and federal, where we can apply for grants to get the staffing, even if it's two to three years. We've done that in the past. It's probably the best alternative because there won't, I mean, we did everything we could to get that budget to where it was. You saw what happened in Dunkirk, eighty-four percent.
Yeah.
We're lucky.
Yeah.
We're very fortunate, we had a reserve and a carpa left over, so, you know. It's, it's, there's some things that really have to be discussed in depth with this as far as, you know, how, how we want to go about, how the commission wants to go about structuring it and, you know, where, where we start, obviously. And I think starting point would be to try to get something formidable so that we fall under that umbrella. I think that's the best route, my own personal opinion, from an economics standpoint, and not enabling any more cost on the city or taxpayers.
If, if I go, I'm going to take a trip back to the nineteen nineties and people that I was working with then, some of them that had been in politics in the city for ever. And older people who really wanted things to start getting, you know, to increase in, in building a city where people want to live. A lot of times, people were very happy, but still they were politicians who wanted to try to do better. And I liked the, the ones that I met that liked to do better. Some of them always wanted to kind of cut things down and I didn't think that would be a good, that's why I was brought. But the one thing, though, that I think is true is that there has to be a lot more communication with the residents of the city. You've got to get them on your side going forward. We've got the shrinking population. We've got a big bunch of people that have already left. We've got businesses that are shut down and they were all started by Jamestown people. Most of them, Art Metal, Watson, Jamestown Metal Corporation, all of them. But we don't have that drive coming out of the population anymore. Can we get it back? I don't know. It's just like the question that I gave to you in a, in an email. With all that's happening, the way things are sinking, the way stores are leaving the area, you think some of them, some people might want to start a small store again? Kind of like what you did. I mean, it's grown though, it's getting fatter all the time. But it, it's the kind of thing, we get people working in the cities to do things. And we've lost that in people who want to be in their business for themselves and everything else.
It has to bring us back to just about, you know, you mentioned Buffalo and some of the suburbs have this. Has there been an opportunity to talk to folks up there about some of what they went through and some of the pros and cons?
Um, the short answer is no. The longer answer is no, but we did have plans to make plans
Okay.
um, to have a commission field trip up to East Aurora a couple of years ago. Um, it did not come together, but, so the short answer is no.
But we could revisit.
But we could, we could certainly revisit a field trip, yes.
And they were willing to do it.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I can certainly revive those.
Do you know if Mark Conawanda has one?
Say again?
Do you know if Mark Conawanda has one?
I believe so, but I don't want you to quote me on that.
Okay, if they do, I think that would be a better avenue to explore than East Aurora.
Yes, Hamburg has one too.
The county's.
And Hamburg has one.
Hamburg has an LPO as well.
All right, so without, so if, yes, if kind of this is moving forward and you'd like the commission to, to look over and stuff, I'm more than happy to. So, thank you.
Bring that forward. I'll send an email out in the next day or so and.
And we can have a joint work session.
Yeah. Our next council meeting is not on next Monday, but it's a voting session following Monday, the third day.
Okay.
I think that for council, if I just kind of agree, I think that, um, bringing representatives to maybe the first work session of the year and, um, because our housing committee meets at six thirty, we could always have them meet at six and then have an extra half hour to kind of start kicking around the idea if, you know, I don't want to speak for councilmen and rebels, but.
You can.
Um, but if, you know, if that was something that both sides were interested in,
Yeah.
just to either find out, yes, we want you to continue, or no, no, you don't need to spend any more time. You know, because we don't want to.
Hours on this.
Right. Right. Yeah, you don't want to see the investment in your time and energy if there's not going to be enough interest to push a vote.
Yes.
Forward, would just be my suggestion. But I think, I think housing would be a great place to start.
Yes.
I think, well, I remember being on council and they, one of the people I asked is where have you done this in one of the pro cons? So could we get that, some of that information for the council before we present something? You've got an open one office there, but I don't think everybody needs to be there. I think important that Ellen and Mike are there, clearly.
But we can sit down, you can make your comments in the public sector, I'll then, as far as presentation wise.
Well, no, you know, there's two work sessions every month, so if, you know, if the first one, if you need more time, if you want to try and have your field trip ahead of time so you can bring back some of that. And for, so that you have, you know, as much as you want to, um, kind of arm yourselves with, but, I mean, at any point, Joe, you can mention it under, at the voting session, under, you know, reports from boards and commissions, and what you've talked about and what your potential future plans are for further engagement.
Okay, no, it's great, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, under new business, the, the housing assessment, she's going to be here next month.
Yes.
For a presentation.
Yes, Rebecca.
And if anyone from housing or any other committees or commissions wants to attend, that's great. It's a ninety-six page document. And it is, there, there's a lot of charts in that.
There's always more reading material.
I think so as well, yes. But it's intense. And it's, there's a lot of information, so I'm looking forward to hearing what she has to say. So if we have questions for her, please email them prior so that Ellen can get them to her if we have.
Yeah, I'm very confident that Rebecca will be able to break it down. She will probably anticipate a lot of questions. Um, I'm, I'm sure a lot of the questions are things that the county experienced in making, in putting the assessment together, so, yeah. But yeah, you're looking before them to me.
Interesting to hear what, you know, just her presentation. Is there anything else before the planning commission? Any other questions? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy Mary's.
Thank you. I want to give you a couple charts and stuff.
Sure.